Thank you very much. Good evening, welcome to City of North Bend, Washington City Council Meeting for July 20th, 2021, meeting virtually as we have been for over the last year. Would the clerk please confirm the role?
Mayor, I believe that Councilmember Elwood and Councilmember Cullen are absent. I am not seeing them.
Ms. Cullen is joining the meeting right now.
Okay, so Councilmember Elwood is absent, Your Honor.
Okay. I'm here. You didn't call me, Suzy. Here?
Well, we didn't ask for who's here, Mr. Garcia. We asked for who's not.
We used to.
We did use to. And we will be getting back to that. I'll be commenting more on that later in the meeting. However, what I've heard for right now is we have six members present, so appreciate that. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We do have four items. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion? I have a second.
Second.
Heard that come from Mr. Lautenbach. A motion by Mr. Godhelp, second by Mr. Lautenbach. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Are there any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Almost forgot that part. Citizen comments, this is the time during the meeting when if you would like to address council on any item not on tonight's agenda, you may do so. To do so, please indicate in the chat box or star an eye on your phone if you have called in and you'll be called upon. You'll have up to three minutes to speak to council and please do start with your name and address for the record. Don, do we have anyone?
Yes, Allison Law, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
All right, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome. Mayor McFarland and city council members, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Allison Law. I live in the city of Snoqualmie. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my family, as well as another resident living in Snoqualmie. Her name is Bijia Wong and the address is 8008 Railroad Avenue, Snoqualmie. We have enjoyed a living in this friendly Snoqualmie Valley community and have embraced the peaceful natural setting since 2002. Being healthy and staying safe has been our primary concern for families and community since the pandemic started a year and a half ago. As our community is now reopening, we continue to share our practice of mind and body exercise from ancient China to the community for the last 20 years. We believe the practice Falun Dafa would benefit our community even more today. I would like to emphasize that this practice is from ancient China, not the communist China. From the practice of Falun Dafa, which is also called Falun Gong, we have received numerous health benefits to ourselves, friends, and family members. We have participated in festival at Mongsai Parades and summer festival booths. We have taught the exercises free of charge in the North Bend Library to benefit more residents in Snoqualmie Valley. We believe Falun Dafa is a cultural jam that transcends racial, religious, and national boundaries and would benefit individuals and families. Since its introduction to the public in China, Falun Dafa had been recognized around the world for its health benefits and has received many, many awards. Additionally, we have received other proclamations from the local area that includes proclamation from Oak Harbor, Snoqualmie two times, including the one just issued a month ago, Carnation, Issaquah, and Seattle. Currently, 100 million people in over 100 countries practice Falun Dafa. Unfortunately, since July 1999, Falun Dafa has been persecuted by the Chinese government due to its popularity and its deep roots in ancient Chinese history and culture. Sadly, many practitioners have faced jail sentences, torture, and even death in China. We are very fortunate to be here in this nation. We love America. We join, we enjoy the freedom to practice Falun Dafa. We are reaching out to you today because we would like to submit a proclamation request recognizing Falun Dafa and its health benefit to people. Your support and recognition of Falun Dafa would embrace a sense of community, promote staying healthy and safe for all people, young and old, living in Snoqualmie Valley. We appreciate your time and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Law. Appreciate it. Do we have anyone else?
I am not seeing anybody else.
Okay, that, thank you. Announcements, presentations, and appointments. First item up on this agenda is agenda item number five, AB 21-074, appointment to the TBD Proposition 1 Pro and Con Committee. And guess what? For a change, I'm getting to introduce and give you the kind of the overview for this council. I believe you do understand and know this already. But in June of 2021, the council, acting as a governing board of the Transportation Benefit District for the city, passed Resolution 1982, providing for the submission to voters of the city at the state general election on November 2nd this year, proposition to renew a sales and use tax in the amount of 2/10 of 1% for a 10-year period to fund a portion of the cost of the transportation improvement projects contained in the city's six-year transportation improvement plan. As part of that renewal, we are requested to create two committees, recruit individuals to serve on those for a pro and con argument to go into the voters' pamphlet. Individuals interested in serving on either of those committees, the pro committee or the con committee, were asked to submit their name, address, phone number, email address, for which the committee would then and which committee they would like to serve on, to the city by July 13th. To date, the city received three applicants, Mark Jocelyn, Ken Herring, and Craig Glazier, for the pro committee, and no applicants for the con committee. If the city is unable to identify persons to serve on either or both statement committees, the city will notify King County Elections detailing the efforts to establish the committees, and King County Elections would reach out to a select group of individuals to see if there was any interest in serving on one of those vacant committees. I would say that my understanding of this is that if they do not engender anyone, then simply the statement of a pro and con would be left blank. However, in this case, we did get three applicants, all for the pro committee, and so I am recommending the council appoint Mark Jocelyn, Ken Herring, and Craig Glazier to the pro committee for North Bend TBD, number one position, the renewal of the sales and use tax for improvements. So with that, I'll pause to see if there's any clarifying questions needing to be asked, which would most likely be answered by either the clerk or our financial analyst. Seeing none. And prior to asking for a motion, we should see if there's any member of the public wishing to speak on this item. I know at least one of the proposed committee members is here, but we have let them know that there's not a need to be, to speak or be interviewed, but certainly council, if they choose to, could ask a question of them if they want. It's like we have no one looking to speak.
Not yet.
And with that, I'm going to reach out to the mayor pro tem to ask him to make the motion, as this did not, the appointment of this committee did not go through a, the committee structures directly from me to you.
So I would like to make a motion to approve AB 21-074, appointing Mark Jocelyn, Ken Herring, and Craig Glazier to the pro committee for the North Bend TBD, number one, Proposition 1, renewal of sales and use tax for transportation improvements.
Second.
Mr. Godhelp, was that you the second?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Council discussion, any discussion? Mr. Garcia, did you want to speak to it?
Well, I guess I did have a question for the applicant that came.
All right.
Mostly just because I wanted him to have to pop up on camera.
I understand that. I suspect that. I suspect the question is going to be to Citizen Herring.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Herring, could you unmute yourself? Mr. Garcia, could you ask your question?
Oh, he can't, he can't be on video, can he?
He can.
Yeah, let's do it. It's been a while.
Don, that would be you having to give him, I think, permission for video.
He was on earlier.
I just did.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Got unmuted.
Says he is.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for stepping up and joining this, this committee. I said, I'm specifically asking you this because you are the only one that came and it is good to see you. So. What are, what are, do you guys have any of the arguments that you would be putting forward for this?
Well, let me step in while he's trying to get audio.
Unmuted.
And say that, you know, they've not met, of course, yet, and so they'll be talking together on, on the, how they're going to write it. Ken, I apologize. I'm not sure where the problem is, but we're not hearing you. I do see you're not muted, but it's not coming through.
Well, you know, while he's getting muted, I would have to say he should know it personally because he was mayor when we first passed this TBD.
Are you, are you plugged in, Ken?
No, not working.
Well, well, Mr. Herring, I'll look forward to hearing from you when you guys.
How about now?
Oh, yeah.
There we go.
There we go.
And technology, don't you love it?
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Well, I'm well. Thank you. Thank you. And thanks for calling on me. I, it was, when we, when we did this the first time, the argument we used was that so little of the citizens' money would be going towards this. I mean, if I'm not mistaken, it was like $10 if you spent $5,000 on taxable goods. And who does that except buying a car? So it should be a no-brainer, and we'll use other people's money and get our roadsticks.
Perfect. That's the answer I remember.
Yep. And thank you. Oh, I had to wait for the, for the vote, right?
Yeah, you should wait for the vote.
Thank, thank, thanks for stepping up, Ken. We. I was gonna say, just vote no. Vote no.
I think, I think the possibility here would be that, you know, I think they'll vote you as a group and with, you know, Mark and Craig ought to be able to pull your coattails over the edge.
Your Honor, can I note for the record that Councilmember Elwood arrived at 7:06 PM?
Thank you.
That was, that was my only question. I just, I feel like this is a vitally important piece of fixing our infrastructure moving forward. And I, I'm glad to see that we had three people, and I would, I would call them three people of influence of our town, to step up to help lead this charge. So I, I'm very thankful for those three.
Thank you. Mr. Godhelp, you were the second. Did you name anything?
I truly want to thank Craig Glazier and Mark Jocelyn and Ken Herring for stepping up. This is really an important, you know, you know, vote measure for us. It has helped us fund a lot of roads as we go forward and hoping forward, looking forward to it funding more roads. And as Mr. Herring said, using other people's money, the majority of this comes from outsiders that come into town and spend money in this nice community, of which we try to invite them and bring them out to enjoy. So let them help us cover the costs of our roads for doing so. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just jump in, I know, and Ken, great to see you, but it's important for council to keep your comments to just the, the agenda item at hand. There actually is a statute that prevents what could be construed to be comments favoring or opposing a ballot measure unless you go through certain procedural requirements, which we haven't done for tonight. So we would be able to do that, put something on your agenda to formally take a position on the ballot measure, but framed from comments that could be construed as supporting or opposing it tonight.
Okay, we'll just close and I support the people on the board.
Thank you. Thank you for the caution, Mr. Kenyon, received. Any? Any other council member? Okay, with that, motion before you is to approve AB 21-074, appointing Mark Jocelyn, Ken Herring, and Craig Glazier to the pro committee for the North Bend TBD, number one, Proposition 1, renew, renewal of sales and use tax for the transportation improvements. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and it is unanimous, and that would be seven, since we do have confirmation that Mr. Elwood made the meeting. Thank you very much. And as just a reminder again to council, no one did step forward for the con committee, so we'll pass that information on to the county as such. So thank you very much for that. Let me roll back up to my agenda. Next on the agenda is commission and committee reports. Let's start with community and economic development. Ms. Miller? Where are you, Mary? Unmute, please.
My apologies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, CED, Community and Economic Development Committee, in other words, met today virtually, this is the 20th of July at 3:00 PM. Councilmembers Rosen and Elwood joined me, and we listened to a presentation from our EDC Committee, that's Economic Development Committee, and they, they gave us a great, she gave us a great presentation on how to help advise us and give this, we also looked at amendment, amending our municipal code on noise abatement and control. Chief Perry was there to answer any questions and concerns. Finally, Rebecca was, was there to speak to us about the Code Amendment for Development Regulations, and that was great. It was a good, good meeting, great big part of.
Thank you very much. Finance and Administration, Mr. Godhelp.
Hi, Your Honor, thank you. The Finance Administration did not meet this month. Our next scheduled meeting is August 3rd at 4:00 PM.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Ms. Cullen.
Oh, Mayor Pro Tem, Garcia stood in for me, and so I'm going to have him give you the update.
Oh, no, no.
Thank you for that reminder. Mr. Garcia, you are on point.
Oh, okay. Well, we met, we met last Tuesday at virtually, and we had three topics of discussion, two of which were getting updates from our police and fire departments and our partners there, and just good news all around. You know, Eastside Fire and Rescue has sent out some help to the other areas that, that need help with wildfires. So just kind of remind our citizens that, that North Bend is essentially participating in that and helping, helping do our part. I had a good update from them, and I think Ben, Ben is on our call today, so good to see him. Hopefully he got his issues resolved with, with what we needed him to get taken care of there. And then Chief Perry Phipps from Snoqualmie Police came on, and we'll probably get an update from him. There's, there's some potential law changes that might change the way that some of our community policing is working, and, and we're just trying to, trying to find our way through that. And then we had a brief discussion on kind of, I guess, maybe the way to, where this would be sharing, sharing the trails with each other, and the King County Trail in particular, and Mr. Miller is going to send a message to King County and see if they have any, any policies in place to help with the potential conflict of pedestrians and bike riders on the valley trail.
That it?
That's it. I don't know when our next scheduled meeting is.
All right. Thank you very much.
But I will add that it will be in person.
Be in-person committee meeting. Very good. Thank you very much. Transportation and Public Works, Mr. Lautenbach.
Thank you, Your Honor. We last met on June the 29th, virtually. Several of the topics we're going to be discussing later this evening, including the interlocal agreement with SPU on water-saving partnership and latecomers agreement between the city and TriPoint development for their sewer system. So those are two of the major topics that we covered during the TPW meeting, and also we had a lot line adjustment discussion about property on North Bend Way, and that was the crux of the meeting. We will be meeting again on July the 27th to 4:00 PM virtually.
Thank you very much. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board, Mr. Godhelp. Oh, yep, that's where I want to go. Now I'm coming back to the pro tem.
I was just going to check. I wanted to make, you just want to mess us all up and confuse us.
I, I do. I gotta talk.
All right, so Eastside Fire and Board, Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors' regular meeting was July 8th, 2020. It was a virtual meeting. We discussed COVID and the move in the region to Phase 2 as of July 1st. While we're also discussing moving our Eastside Fire and Board rescue meetings to have it in place in September, we're working on some issues that apparently crop up that we have to make sure that there's ability for the public to come in via video and be able to comment. So we're still working on some of those. Hopefully we'll have those taken care of before that next meeting. We discussed the PFAS, the Executive Committee met to just discuss a work plan for the new $300,000, and it will be completed by June of 2022. We are in the middle of our second audit for the financial of 2020, and that should be done pretty soon, as being done by Clark Newboard. On the regular agenda item, we approved firefighter and company officers collective of bar bargain agreement. We approved a board policy minimum of staffing. We approved motion for the city of Issaquah Station 71 MOU to do some upgrades to that station, since it's going to take us a while to replace that station. There was a discussion of something that I think at some point we'll discuss, possible action on the Snoqualmie Tribe Ancestral Lands Movement. And then we discussed the funding formula and discussed that we do, did have people, or discussed the Cedar Hills brush fire briefing that we took care of about a week ago. And as Chris said, we have several units out at the current fire station. We also had a second board meeting that was a special board meeting on July 15th, at which time we approved an interlocal agreement for fire and emergency and medical services. What we have done, what that motion is, is a contract between Eastside Fire and Rescue and Woodinville Fire and Rescue. What that will being is we will take over the operations and running of those stations through a contract. As you all know, there was, so basically, WFR will experience the overhead cost savings, and EFA will collect 10% administration charge that will be treated as non-partner revenue. So it will be a plus to the partners in helping bring down our costs, but also savings for Woodinville Fire and Services, and that will commence as of, what, I think it's October 1st. So we're in the middle, middle of integrating that. That is all tonight from Eastside Fire and Rescue.
Thank you very much. And then we'll turn back to Mr. Garcia, Mayor Pro Tem's report.
Oh, I'm pretty sure that we haven't. Our last meeting was in May, and so we have given that report already, and then our next meeting is going to be in August. So unfortunately, I don't have a lot to report.
You're referencing work studies?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay. Well, all right. Thank you very much. And we will move then to Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission last met June 10th and provided a recommendation on amendments to the municipal code regarding temporary uses following a public hearing. This amendment is on the agenda at tonight's meeting. The Planning Commission will next meet on Thursday, July 22nd. They will address two proposed municipal code amendments. First is related to providing the electrical conduit necessary to support electrical vehicle charging infrastructure in the garages of new homes. The second is related to indoor emergency shelters, indoor emergency housing, permanent supportive housing, and transitional housing as required by House Bill 1220. House Bill 1220 was signed by the governor in May, which eliminated, eliminated barriers for these uses, which prevent cities from prohibiting these uses and requires cities to be in compliance with the new law by the end of September. In terms of the park commission, they met on June 30th and conducted the part two of their tour and of various city parks to discuss potential park projects and maintenance needs for consideration, for considering amendments to the Parks Capital Facilities Plan and potential recommendations for use of the annual park maintenance budget. The Parks Commission intends to provide a report to staff and the city council with their recommendations for expenditures for the park maintenance budget. The Parks Commission won't meet in, in July and will next meet on August 25th to discuss recommendations to staff and council on expenditures concerning park maintenance and improvements for next year's budget. The Economic Development Commission met on June 22nd, and they heard an update from the mayor, similar to the state of the city, and that was presented to those commissioners. Topics discussed were incoming new businesses, infrastructure projects, street and sidewalk improvements, and housing. The commissioners further discussed the SWAT analysis with the mayor and the chairperson presented to the CED Committee, as was discussed earlier. The commissioners also reviewed the city, the city brand implementation guide spokes, locating where each spokes may fit within these visions and goals of the economic development plan. The EDC will next meet on July 27th and are expected to review follow-up from our CED Committee and start to discuss brainstorming policies as part of the economic development plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deming. Great report. Regional committees, do any other council member have a regional committee to report on? Mr. Lautenbach.
The Suburban Things Association Public Issues Committee did meet last week, and we discussed a variety of topics, the most important to which we'll be seeing on the August ballot, the renewal of the Best Starts for Kids Initiative is going to be there, and everybody should take a good, close look at that thing. It is an interesting program and involves quite a bit of money, so make sure that you're fully informed before casting your vote. The other items that we talked about was the comprehensive plan, the countywide planning policies, and the feedback that they've been getting on those. We have been active via staff in trying to make sure that we're on top of the changes as they continue to roll in. It still is a draft document, but they should be taking final votes here before too long. So that's what we had at the pick meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, I saw your hand.
Yeah, the watershed forum meets tomorrow virtually at, I believe, 2:00 PM, and I guess the reason I also want to bring this up is it would probably be a good idea for somebody to maybe start to come to these meetings as an alternate, as right now we have the chair of this committee, and then I think it would be a tough transition to go from that to somebody that's brand new. So if you're interested, please reach out to me. It's a pretty fun group.
Appreciate that reminder. I don't recall, do we, did we appoint an alternate this year, or is that seat vacant?
I believe it's vacant.
Okay, so council members, that's a reach out to all of you that, that we need to get an alternate in there and attending those meetings.
I believe I just saw Mr. Godhelp's hand up.
Oh, is that he was holding volunteering? Thank you.
I got it. I got enough. I did want to add one thing to one of the regional. I got it. I got enough. Um, I did want to add one thing to one of the regional committees to go along with Mr. Loudonback's pick comments. Thank you very much. Um, but the E M A committee, uh, met again and we did not get enough applicants for the regional coordinator, uh, positions. And so it's back into what we're gonna do and trying to, uh, move forward and trying to advertise that contract out more. So we actually get that as a contract.
Thank you. Any any other glancing around quickly? Ms. Colan.
Uh, Meadowbrook Farm Preservation Association, we met last on June fourteenth and the main gist is one of their tractors, they only have two caught on fire. And so they need another tractor and the grass is getting high and it's a fire hazard. That's it.
Um, I can comment to that, 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 uh, that's been a topic, uh, in the, um, management group to address that. I help them out, do some mowing for them. Uh, but thank you for that reminder. Okay, I think we exhausted that. So we will move on to introductions. Item number six on your agenda is A B twenty-one dash zero seven five. This is a public hearing. Resolution authorizing a latecomers agreement with TriPoint regarding Cedar Landing Sewer Lift Station. We'll start with, um, staff report by Mr. Regos. Any clarifying questions? Then we will open the public here. So, Mr. Regos.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Page thirty-seven in your packets. I should also inform you that, uh, page forty-seven in your packets has a really nice map that shows where the sewer lift station is and the project that, um, precipitated the need for that sewer lift station. Um, late comer agreement, sounds like a fancy word. Really what it is, it's just, it's an agreement that provides a partial recovery for the expenses paid for the installation of some infrastructure. So in this particular case, then the company name was Quadrant. Now their TriPoint Homes had to construct a multimillion dollars, one and a half million dollars roughly sewer lift station for their hundred and thirty homes. Um, during the design of that lift station, we wanted to ensure that some of our North Bend residents would have access to that lift station if they ever chose to develop their properties. So that they would be able to connect into the sewer system and the sewer lift station was sized large enough with adequate pumps as well so that they they could, uh, most easily connect to sewer. So there were some extra costs associated with that that had been developed by the engineers and contractor involved. And, um, so that is what this late comer agreement is. It's roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I think it's about fifteen hundred dollars per connection. The city is kind of the middle man here. So Quadrant or TriPoint fronted all the money, all the infrastructures built. And then when any property owners, if they choose to connect into the sewer system, would pay the city a small portion of that expense and then the city would then forward that money to the, um, applicant, uh, quadrant. And like I said, it was somewhere around fifteen hundred dollars. So there is a required public hearing for this action. And, um, that concludes my, uh, staff report.
Before I open the public hearing, is there any clarifying questions from council for staff?
I have one, your honor.
Okay, Mr. Elwood.
Um, Mr. Rego, thank you for that. A quick question. You mentioned that if somebody would like to join, um, can you describe that a little bit better? I think, um, are most of the people in that area already on sewer or are they on septic? And is it one of those things where now that there's sewer within so many feet of their home, if something goes wrong with their septic, they then have to join? I'm just trying to understand the the logistics of if they want to join.
Yeah, good, good question. Um, so most of the properties out on Stilson Avenue are not connected to the city's public sewer system. So they are on private septic drain fields. Um, I don't know the condition of their drain fields. Um, you know, the city doesn't have access, um, to that. Obviously, most of them are probably working just fine. Um, but when they choose to subdivide, um, all of a sudden, um, things usually get a little bit tighter. So where the former septic drain field was a future home might be, or perhaps it's a wider road, or perhaps that's used for a storm drainage system or other utilities. So, um, this, uh, project and this lift station, um, allows those folks to connect into this sewer line. Previously, if this project never existed, the the a property owner would have had to up, would have, would have had to front all the money themselves. And it could have been, you know, they might have had to build their own sewer lift station. Um, and that's tough to do if it's a subdivision of three homes or four homes or eight homes on a two acre piece of property. Um, this was a very large, a thirty-six acre piece of property. And so Quadrant was financially able to, uh, upfront all these costs. So, um, the sewer runs right down Stilson Avenue now, and so people can, uh, property owners along Stilson Avenue either side can connect in if they choose. Either they want to connect in or they they want to subdivide their properties, um, then they will most likely have to, they will have to connect into the sewer system.
Thank you, Mr. Elwood. Thank you. Anyone else clarifying? Okay, so before we move to a motion, we will open the public hearing. I have the time at seven thirty-six. If you are a member of the public and wish to speak on this item, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine. Correct me if I'm wrong here, Ms. That's going to be forgetting my number, uh, if you're on the phone.
Not seeing anybody that wishes to speak.
We'll give it just a moment. Okay, getting none. We will close the public hearing at seven thirty-seven. Thank you very much. Um, let's see here. We've got, is Mr. Lautenback, T P W. This come through your committee?
It absolutely did, your honor, and thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve A B twenty-one dash oh seven five. A resolution authorizing the TriPoint latecomers reimbursement agreement for upsizing of sewer lift station improvements at Cedar Landing subdivision as a first and final.
I have a second by Ms. Colan, so a motion by Mr. Lautenback, second by Ms. Colan. Discussion, Mr. Lautenback, would you like to speak to the motion?
I I thought Mark was very eloquent. It is fairly straightforward. It allows for the developer who fronted the cost of the potential improvements to uh, get some reimbursement should people who are joining the, uh, the development that they developed and, uh, avail themselves of city sewer system at a great, at what is really a greatly reduced cost to them by joining an existing infrastructure. So, uh, I would recommend to do pass.
Thank you. Ms. Colan, anything to add? Anyone else? Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, I I think that Mr. Ladenbach touched on a key point here. The the nice thing about this is that, uh, for the people that are already out in this area that wish to hook up to it, uh, this this cost is fixed in today's dollars. I think that we all know with the cost of construction lately, this projects like this would only get more expensive. Uh, all been, all of a sudden, instead of eight people having to front the bill, it's divided by a hundred and thirty-eight people. And, um, it it's locked in at a price that that is based on today's, um, construction cost or really probably two years' construction cost ago. So I think it's a, it's a a win-win for those people that are interested in hooking up.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Motion before you is to approve A B twenty-one dash zero seven five. A resolution authorizing the TriPoint latecomers reimbursement agreement for upsizing of the sewer lift station improvements at Cedar Landing subdivision as a first and final reading. All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is number seven, A B twenty-one dash zero seven six. A motion authorizing agreement with S P U regarding the water-saving partnership. Uh, Mr. Stonebridge is gonna speak to this, uh, but let me first say I'm very excited about this because to me this is the third leg in fulfilling our commitment made over a year ago in the water, um, conservation ordinance for how we were going to be better stewards of the water overall, taking care of both the environment and our, um, public. And and so this is exciting personally for me that this is coming forward. Uh, with that, Mr. Stonebridge.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, and thank you for this opportunity to discuss the agenda bill authorizing in interlocal agreement with Seattle Public Utilities for Water Conservation Services through Saving Water for Partnership. So before I get started, I just want to recognize we have two representatives this evening attending, uh, from Seattle Public Utilities, uh, Terry Gregg. She is the wholesale contracts analyst and Kelly O'Rourke. She is the water conservation manager, uh, that oversees, uh, the, um, the program itself. So I'll jump right into. So what is Saving Water Partnership? So the Saving Water Partnership is an organization comprised of Seattle Public Utilities and eighteen wholesale water customers who collaborate to provide water conservation programs to the customers in Seattle and King County. Saving Water Partnership's conservation program emphasizes long-term water use efficiency for residential and commercial customers. Although the Saving Water Partnership continues to support customers, rebates or retro less efficient fixtures with more efficient models, the group is deepening its emphasis on youth education and community outreach, which I feel is very important. This is especially, uh, important in maintaining and growing a conservation ethic, particularly in the face of a significant regional population growth. Collectively, the Saving Water Partnership is working to achieve its adopted water use efficiency goal and compliance with the state of Washington municipal water law. The goal of the regional water conservation program for twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-eight is to keep the total average annual retail water use of members of the Saving Water Partnership under a hundred and ten million gallons a day through twenty twenty-eight, despite forecasted population growth by reducing per capita waters. So at this time, I'm gonna hopefully be able to, uh, turn it over to Kelly and she's going to discuss the various conservation services that are provided through Saving Water Partnership.
Thank you. Kelly, can unmute?
Hello, this is Kelly O'Rourke. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Sorry, we couldn't get the Zoom link to work, so we're joining by our phones, um, just the audio. Yeah, so I thought I'd just take two minutes and cover a high level of the actual programs and then talk about what I think of as two key benefits for the city of North Bend for joining the program. Um, and in your council packets, pages seventy-five to eighty, there is a couple of summary slides that talk about the program. Um, I won't go into those in detail. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about those. But the big picture is that it's a very comprehensive program. So we have programs that, um, are focused on each of the different sectors. So there's opportunities for single-family, multifamily, and commercial customers. We, um, talk about kind of the program having three prongs. There's an educational prong, there's a technical, uh, systems prong, and there's a financial assistance rebate prom. We have programs that focus on indoor conservation and outdoor conservation. We have programs that focus on the hardware aspect of getting people to upgrade their fixtures to more efficient fixtures, but also the behavioral side. So we really think of it as very comprehensive something for everyone. Um, me talk a minute about the the benefits to North Bend. I see those being two, and that is water reduction and customer service. So on water reduction, from a water supply perspective, I know that you want to actively reduce water consumption from your customers. And joining the Saving Water Partnership will basically give you access to a suite of tools to do so. And again, those are the programs that are in the packet. Also, on water reduction, water efficiency, of course, shows the city is taking strong stewardship of the water resources. So that's an important, um, activity for the city to be involved in. And then on the customer service side, I just think it's a great to be able to offer programs and services to your water customers. So whether, you know, you're proactively marketing out to your customers, your customers are calling in and asking questions, to have actually programs and services that you can offer to them is is really good. And it, you know, helps to show value for the rates that they're paying for their water services. So we think of water reduction and customer service as great benefits. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the detailed programs or anything else.
Thank you, Kelly. Ted, back to you. If you had anything more you needed to add?
No, Mayor, that's all that I have.
Okay. Um, with that, then, do we have clarifying questions from council before we hear from the public? Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, sorry. I, one of the things that I noticed, uh, because I I would agree, like the education of our kids is it's paramount in in moving forward with this. And I noticed that, I think it was like, uh, a fifty-minute in-person, uh, session is offered for elementary kids up to, I think it's a K through eighth grade, maybe?
Yeah.
And so so my question is, how do we, like, is that something you guys set up with the schools directly? Um, how how do we go about getting that or at least attempting to get that in place with our our two, uh, elementary schools in North Bend?
Yep, it's underway right now. So we contract with a local environmental education nonprofit. They're called Nature Vision, and we have a multi-year contract with them. And so they actually market the programs to the schools. They have pretty deep relationships with, um, the schools. Mostly, they're working with the science teachers directly and teachers directly, but also with the districts. And so they market the programs. We did reach out to them and ask and confirm that they could serve the North Bend area, and they said they actually already are. They they we we fund them programs through us, but they have other clients, and so they're actually active in your community through other agencies that, uh, fund their programs. So they already have those relationships and they'll be marketing this fall or the summer really um, soon to the teachers in your service area. So that's done for you. A lot of the programs basically. Sorry, go ahead.
I said, perfect.
Great. We should be clear that basically, um, Seattle, Seattle Utilities builds the infrastructure for the program, but each of the members of the Saving Water Partnership do need to actively market the programs in your area. So there are certain area, certain programs like our toilet rebate program, for example, that you guys will need to market yourselves to your customers through, you know, newsletters, bill stuffers, whatever you, um, have for access points. But then certain programs like the youth education program is actually marketed for you.
Thank you very much.
Perfect. Ms. Colan.
Oh, I really love this program and I love the education. I love all the saving, the landscape programs. And I was thinking, how are you going to market this and get the word out, for instance, the natural yard care brochures? Because I was thinking about, maybe I need a sprinkler system in my backyard. And then I was reading this packet and I thought, well, maybe I need natural yard care instead. It would be easier. And a couple from in the Seattle Times from Sacramento did it and their yard was beautiful, like a English garden. And that's very intriguing to me.
Yeah, so it's a great question. As I just mentioned, so you guys at the city will be responsible for basically letting your customers know that these services are available and, you know, different members do that in a variety of different ways. We will do certain things like for our, um, the brochure, the natural yard care program. Um, we do contact with local nurseries and ask them if they want to stock our brochures. So, um, there are several large regional, uh, nurseries that stock the brochures. So we will, we have a, one of our staff members is our landscape efficiency program manager. So he will go out and and, you know, talk to you and talk to your community about what are the opportunities in your community to stock brochures and just promote programs. So we'll do that. And then we also have, you might notice there are, um, really popular classes for the public about how to do efficient irrigation. And basically the city, you know, we we have the curriculum and the teachers all set up and the members, the utility members basically activate that. And you would basically say, hey, we want to teach a couple of these classes. We want to host them at City Hall or the Community Center, whatever, and we'll work with Ted Stonebridge is going to be the main conduit for the city foot program. And so he'll work on, you know, getting those set up. So it's a mixture of, um, you know, Seattle Utilities building the infrastructure in the program and then you as a member figuring out how to market and activate it in your community with some help from us.
Ted, did you want to comment on the specific channels you're considering on getting that information out through the city?
Sure. So, um, you know, we'll we'll. Sure, so, you know, we'll we'll utilize our our websites and social media. More than likely, once we have staff orientated to the program, we'll we'll do maybe. Possibly like an open house, or we'll roll out, you know, something to our citizens, you know, getting getting the message out to them. I'll probably work with maybe, you know, Dana putting out something. And getting out, you know, a message to to folks and about all of the programs that will be available.
Thank you. Council, any other questions? At this time, we'll move to public, oh, sorry, Mary?
Yep, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, here we go, I love everything about this, my specific question was about the seasonal messaging kit for SWP. Members, what is, what does that include?
Yeah, so we have one of our staff members, responsibility is just general outreach and education, and so she puts together a kit. That is messaging on, it's based, right now, it's every two months. So it's a two month set of messages, it's words and text images. That the members can push out through their existing marketing channels. So there are things that basically content for your social media, if you have social media that you use, it basically has. You know, all the content that you want to push out, if you have city newsletters, or you have bill inserts that you can put information in. We basically think about what we want to focus on for the next couple of months and send it out to all of the Save Water Partnership members. And then they're pushing it out through their existing channels. And we were talking with Mark and Ted about doing an orientation for staff. And definitely our that marketing kit and how we can help you market this. To your water customers will be a key piece of that orientation to introduce you to that person, make sure you guys really understand what that. Looks like and how you get that, it gets emailed out, we have an online bank of all the images also that you can access at any time, and so we really. Try and, you know, build all the content and the pieces that the members are going to need to help market the program, and then just conservation in general.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? And with that, then, we'll move to a public comment, if you are a member of the public, to speak about the. Motion here, the the. Water Conservation Services Contract, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine if you're on the phone. You'll have up to three minutes, and you'll start with your name and address for the record. Don, I didn't see anything in the chat box, have you got anything?
No, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay. With this, Mr. Loudback, does this come through Transportation Public Works?
It absolutely did, thank you, your honor. Motion to approve AB twenty one dash four seventy six. Authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Seattle Public Utilities for Water Conservation Services in the form and content acceptable to the city attorney.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second?
Is that you, Mr. Garcia?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I have a motion, Mr. Loudback, second by Mr. Garcia, Mr. Loudback, did you want to speak further to the motion?
I think Ted and and the staff from SPU have done a fantastic job in putting this program together, it's going to be up to us to take it the. The final mile here in North Bend and implement it wherever we can, we have a lot of great. Resources here in town that I think we can get the information out. And certainly Dana and Ted working together are going to be valuable cogs in in making that happen. All of us here on the council, when we have an opportunity, I think it will be important to. You know, take the components of this program and make sure that they are widely disseminated in the community as we go about. Our daily business and and working with folks here in town. So I think it's a great program, I'm looking forward to participating, and I would recommend it do pass.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, anything to add?
Yeah, I I'm excited about this, this is the, this is the, like you said, the final piece of the water conservation ordinance, this is. The part where hopefully people can get behind this through rebates, education, learning, conserving water. This is, this is exciting stuff, I'm gonna float this back around. To. Danger Bridge, which is sponsored by the Watershed Forum, so one of you guys need to start coming to these meetings.
I I still saw Mr. Gazelle's hand up, I believe he was volunteering.
I I immediately wrote him down for that.
That, great.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, anyone else to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone leap forward. So I appreciate that, motion before you is to approve AB twenty one dash zero seven six. Authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Seattle Public Utilities for Water Conservation Services. In a form and content acceptable to the city attorney. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, it is unanimous, thank you very much for that, yes, as I indicate, I'm very excited, I think it's going to be a fantastic program. For the city, for our residents, and I hope they take full advantage, and I will ensure as as a leader of your administration. That this does get disseminated far and wide through all of our tools, so thank you very much for that. Next on our agenda this evening, and I do, oh, let me back up one second and just say, and thank you very much to the. Members of the program who came forward and were with us tonight to answer questions. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, thank you. Next on our agenda is agenda item number eight, AB one dash zero seven seven. An ordinance amending North Bend Municipal Code eighteen twenty two regarding temporary uses.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a proposal to amend the temporary uses. In in regarding public temporary uses, which would be uses. On properties for public utilities or government agencies, and we're proposing two different sections to be added. The first is to provide a means for a utility or government entity who are building public infrastructure projects to utilize. Vacant property for the storage of needed equipment on a temporary basis while under construction. The current code allows for this type of storage without a temporary use permit for private construction projects on an active construction site. However, public projects are usually construction constructed on existing right of way, a trail or other areas that do not have the space for the. To store the necessary equipment, this proposed code allows for staff to condition the project to ensure compatibility with surrounding uses. And for a storage area, this would usually include screening, truck routes and mud trackout controls. The second amendment is to allow for a utility or government entity to set up a training facility. These facilities usually include temporary structures and storage containers for the agencies to train staff in realistic conditions. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on May twenty seventh, and it continued through June tenth, and they did recommend to city council to approve the proposed amendments. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and I believe we have. A representative from the fire department who was interested in this code for some training facilities for them as well, thank you.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions for staff before we move to public, Ms. Colan?
So that was my question, what kind of training facilities are you thinking, and could you give some examples of that?
Well, as I mentioned, we have been approached by the fire department, they're in the process of looking for property to purchase, to have some training facilities. However, they have not been able to locate it, however, they are interested in possibly using it as a temporary, some property as a temporary facility in this. In the city where they would run different activities.
Did you want to call upon a member of the fire department if they wanted to give that example, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes. Yes.
That would be the deputy liaison, Ben Lane.
And Mr. Lane, I see you there, sir.
Didn't he get a promotion? No, he was the assistant deputy liaison, I think we we moved him up to the deputy liaison.
Okay, perfect.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As stated on Ben Lane, Operations Chief Liaison, Fire and Rescue. And thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the amendments in front of you. Allowing government agencies to potentially implement temporary training facilities, this would support a longstanding goal for Eastside Fire and Rescue. To establish a training location with inside of our service area, and that would, the downstream impacts would be increased operational efficiency. And providing some more realistic training for our crews. I believe there was a question by a member of the council about what that training facility would look like. The best example I could provide would be. A temporary style would look like a Conex boxes, and you can, the the design that we are targeting is either. One to two stories high, it's definitely mobile, it's not a a permanent structure. We don't have any plans to do any sort of burning in it, so it just allow crews to stretch hose line, spray water without damaging anything. And put up ladders to simulate rescue scenarios.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Mr. Elwood?
Feel free to correct me if this is or is not a clarifying question, but. The Planning Commission ran a public hearing on this, was there any pushback or feedback from the community on that front? With respect to opposition to this?
No, we did not have any public comment in opposition.
Thank you.
Anything further? Ms. Colan?
So at this temporary training facility, it will have water hookups for your fire trucks and. How many vehicles would you have, I guess I'm trying to picture how big this temporary facility would be and where?
Ms. Deming, am I, I'm sorry, Ben, if you'd, I I think, Ms. Deming, do you want to clarify the example versus what? This particular code amendments is?
Yeah, so obviously the the code amendment does not have a specific size or area requirement, the code amendment would. Allow us to take a look at the proposed temporary use, make sure that it meets all of the requirements of the code again. Also make sure that they are compatible with surrounding uses, whether it would require fencing, depending on what they were proposing. If they had to have vehicle parking for a longer term, we would look at making sure that we were protecting. You know, storm drain and runoff and things like that, so depending on the specific application, we would take a look and make sure that we were. Making it compatible with surrounding uses and traffic control and things like that.
Some, so Ms. Colan, I mean, interrupted, I mean, you do have a legitimate question there, but I wanted to make sure that we're clear on what. This motion before you is versus the. Fire Department's particular interest in a site. But with that in mind, did you want to restate your question, or is there further there?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Elwood?
Just to be clear. There's a difference between the code and there's a, and the interest in the fire department on a temporary training facility. And what we're talking about is the code for governmental uses that would be compatible uses within similar zoning in those areas, right? So that that's the huge distinction here, correct?
Correct.
Right, and and I think. Heather, if I may. The question that I was hearing you ask is, because we have a fire, the fire department has a specific use case in mind where this code would be beneficial to them. What sort of scenario would that look like in its mass and form? That's what I was hearing you ask, and I just want to make sure that, because because once you said that, I'm like, oh, that's a good question, so I'm just trying to double back on that.
The code is fine, it's just very vague and you don't know what. Facilities or people are going to want to use temporary uses, and so I'm just trying to visualize it in my head. And all that it entails, including water and fire trucks.
Yeah, and I think that, and I do emphasize, I think that is a legitimate question, but that may be for. Discussion about the motion versus a clarifying on on what's presented, so. More just, I'm just a procedural order comment than a than a whether or not it's the right thing to talk about. Make it absolutely, you can bring it up, Mr. Garcia?
Just just to be clear on this, I think this is a clarified question, temporary use permit forty five days or less?
So this proposal does change it for public temporary uses, so the, because. Most can public, both most public construction projects are much longer than a forty five days. When you're building a freeway or you're building this or that, so it does have a different timeline shown, and they're more in. One year implement increment, same with the training. So I believe it is one year for the, let me look, the one year for the construction, storage. And then it can be renewed, but for not more than two additional periods, so the construction, public T U P is. Is three total years possible, and the training is up to five total years.
In one year increments?
In one year increments, correct?
Thank you. Okay. If there's no further questions there, we'll move to public comment, if you're a member of the public and wish to comment on. The item before us here, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine on your phone. I'm seeing none, Don, do you have any? I'm not seeing any, with that. This went through Community and Economic Development, I believe, Ms. Miller. Do you need to unmute?
Yep, yep, it certainly did, Mr. Mayor, I would recommend a motion.
Would you make, did you want to make that motion?
I would like to. Motion to approve AB twenty one dash zero seven seven and an ordinance amending MB MC eighteen twenty two temporary uses. As a first and final reading.
Thank you, do I have a second? Well, we got Mr. Rosen in there first with the second. All right, council discussion, I'll come back, Ms. Ms. Colan, I'm, let me come back to you first, if you wanted to bring back your. Questions around how this might work regarding the. Temporary uses.
So I'm gonna put the firefighters to the side and just how. Temporary uses, what land and what zoning and where does that work for whomever?
So based on the proposed use and and the. Amount of use, you know, we take a look at our allowable uses in in those areas. And in terms of a training facility, usually it's a, some sort of commercial or industrial land use where those would normally be allowed. And so that's where you would usually see the temporary uses. So it it all depends on the exact, again, exact application on what they are proposing to do and the complexity. Of what they're proposing to do.
So then you find an area for them to set up their temporary facility?
They find an area and ask us if it'll work. Or apply to us to see, you know, and we go through the process.
Through the mayor, if it will help at all, our roundabouts would be a good example where you have a lot of construction. And you need to stage it nearby, we saw that happen near the Park Street Roundabout in some of the public right of way area. But you have a number of contractors and they they have equipment, they usually have a an office. And they stage out of there for the various construction functions, so we see that happening with the. Quite often with our larger construction projects that are associated with roundabouts or street water line replacements.
I think that's a good example, Dave, because in that particular, the Park Street Roundabout, we had the benefit of a public parking lot. Roundabout, we had the benefit of a public parking lot adjacent to it. So the question, you know, what to put in your mind is considering everything that was on that lot for almost two years, where would that go if you didn't have that lot next door to it? That's what we're talking about. Mr. Rosen, I think I saw your hand. Nope. Okay.
And if I can add, in terms of construction sites, that is allowed pretty much in any zone as it would be allowed if they had a building permit in that area. Usually you want to, you know, we would look at truck routes if it was a major utility, if it wasn't right up the adjacent to it. But we would look at something as close to the construction site as possible and look at those truck routes. But if it made sense to be in a vacant, even if it was zoned residential, we would still look at it because even subdivisions use their properties as construction yards while they're under construction.
Thank you. Mr. Elwood.
My understanding, this isn't just an automatic rubber stamp for approval for temporary uses because there's a process in place now that allows this unique usage to happen, which makes us more developmental, you know, friendly to the community. But through that process, there is some due diligence on the staff side, which is what are the underlying compatible uses in the area? What's the residential impact? So there's a series of criteria, I think, that the city goes through to approve this temporary use before it's already approved. Would that be a correct summation?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
And I just, like, I'm pretty sure I know this, but this is just for utility and government agencies.
That's correct.
This isn't, this isn't a contractor building a subdevelopment wants to lease somebody's else's land. That, that, something like that would go through a different permit process, right?
That's correct. What I was trying to say is if you were owned commercial property and you were building an office, you're allowed to use that property as a construction yard while you're under construction if you have a building permit. If you're leasing it off-site, we only are going to allow it through this temporary use for public agencies or utilities.
Yeah. So like, I couldn't say, hey, I'm gonna go lease this land and build a temporary Frankie's Pizza Training Center for five years.
Correct. No, that wouldn't be permitted.
It's something like Eastside Fire and Rescue. They're gonna go out, they're gonna, they're gonna propose a, probably a vacant commercial lot, probably potentially even clean it up to use it, and then lease it for up to five years under a temporary use permit.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Five-year Frankie's Training Program sounds interesting.
You can start tomorrow, buddy. Bring your lawnmower, have it over to my house. We'll get you trained.
Driving you back on topic, any, any further comments? Questions? Seeing none. Motion before you is to approve A B twenty-one dash zero seven seven and ordinance amending North Bend Municipal Code eighteen twenty-two temporary uses as a first and final reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you very much. And that was item number eight. Number nine on your agenda is A B twenty-one dash zero seven eight, a motion authorizing the purchase of council chambers A V equipment. Don, this is you.
Thank you. So what you have before you is an agenda bill that will continue upgrading your council chambers in order to be in compliance with the ability for in-person meetings to start and include the remote capability or hybrid capability for the public to participate in the meetings remotely. This also will allow the city to fully utilize some of the capabilities of the existing equipment that we've been purchasing over the course of the last year and a half since we've moved into City Hall, including the new digital cameras, which we've really only had the opportunity to use once before COVID hit, as well as some of the other new items that we have been purchasing over the course of COVID, such as a new North Bend TV server, wireless handheld system, digital mixer, speakers, a new projector, all of these good things in order to try and move us forward into a more technologically savvy environment. However, the challenge of doing hybrid meetings means that we've had to do more upgrades to try and better configure the council chambers, including trying to deal with some of the sound issues, which you may recall from the one or two meetings that we were able to have in the council chambers, was a bit lacking. And so we brought in a company, Key Code Media, who was the company who we purchased the new North Bend TV server from and have utilized also with some past A V projects. And we asked them to do, one, an assessment of what would it take to be able to utilize council chambers and actually be able to hear in there if you're sitting in the council chambers and if you're trying to listen in remotely. And then also, what would we need to do? What equipment would still need to be purchased in order to have hybrid meetings? Meaning someone may still be able to participate via Zoom or via Teams while the council is still in person in council chambers. And so the proposal before you addresses those issues. It's in a contract not to exceed fourteen thousand. It'll probably hopefully be a little bit less than that, but you never know once you get into dealing with configuration and wiring and network switches what might be required. But this basically will upgrade the sound card. It will allow a higher capability of the visual graphics of the system, and it will kind of make everything work together. That's my techie talk. For people who are participating via Zoom or whatever virtual platform they're on versus being in the council chambers and at the end of the day, be able to export that out after the meeting to hopefully a visually pleasing production for our North Bend TV and utilize our new North Bend TV servers to their fullest capability. So a few things with this, we also, in addition to this up to fourteen thousand dollar contract with Key Code Media, which includes all of the labor, the designing of everything working together and the equipment that we still need to make this happen, we're also going to have to purchase an additional laptop to kind of make all of this system work together. And we also will need to deal with the production aspect or staffing issues of how to then operate this more technologically savvy program. Many of you recall, the old system was simply pushing a few buttons and that was it. And this system is a little bit more complicated than that. So we'll be exploring some options over the course of the next few months while we're waiting for the equipment to come in and for the system to be put together in order to be able to achieve that. If it's, you know, hiring a consultant or a contractor for a few hours to come in for the meetings or some other training capabilities for our staff, if we have anyone on staff who, this is something that they can do. So those are, will be some future discussions as we move forward. But right now, we're looking at about a forty-five day, maybe a little bit more by now lead time to even get the equipment in, and we need to get on their schedule for Key Code to be able to come in and install all the equipment because they are doing this for a lot of cities around the region because everyone is wrestling with the same thing with the governor's mandate of the ability to do the hybrid meetings. So as far as project funding goes, the ARPA, the American Recovery Plan Act funds is what we are requesting to use for this because this is in direct response to COVID and the governor's ongoing mandates regarding how we have to conduct our meetings moving forward. And so we know that we have not had the chance yet to bring forward a fully comprehensive plan for how to use the ARPA funds. And unfortunately, we are still waiting for the U.S. Treasury to release their final rule on that. And there's a lot of back and forth. And yes, you can use this on that. No, you can't use this on that. This is one of the few areas of which there is no confusion on, and it fully falls under the ability to use it under one of the buckets of the funding from ARPA. So just due to the timing of this, due to the lead time to order the equipment and to have this all installed, and knowing that council wants to move forward sooner rather than later with resuming in-person meetings, hopefully in September, we are asking permission to be able to enter into this contract and to use ARPA funds for this in advance of the full rollout of recommendations for use of those funds. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Don, thank you for that very technically detailed. Ms. Cullen, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Don. And this isn't clarifying, just curiosity, are we going to have like a large screen TV for the Zoom people like we're looking at, like they have on the Today Show and our council chambers?
Actually, yes. But what we're, what we're looking at is we're looking for a portable one, so it'll be on a little cart. Because the other part I forgot to mention is that we will be also doing upgrades to, or proposing to do upgrades to at least the adjournment room and potentially the council conference room as well, so that we can do committee meetings in a hybrid venue as well. I know we've had that request for some other, some other meetings and to be able to fully utilize those rooms. So we'd be able to use this not only in council chambers, but we could also use it in like the adjournment room or the council conference room as well. It won't be permanently mounted.
So for instance, the, the screen that was laying on the floor in the adjournment room for over a year, we've gotten rid of that saying we can do better. Mr. Elwood.
So to put it simply, we're going to go from this being Don managing our Zoom meetings on the switch that's behind me to something more sophisticated.
I'm sorry, you were breaking up. I saw me managing the meeting, but I missed the second part.
I said, we're gonna go from this being Don managing our meetings, the switchboard behind me to something more sophisticated. I was trying to make a visual joke.
Okay.
Got it. I got it.
Yes, it would be more sophisticated than what we have now.
Any other clarifying questions? Not seeing that. If there's a member of the public which is to speak to this item, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine if you're on the phone. You'll be called upon. Start with your name and your address for the record. Don, I saw you reached out a little bit ago, and we didn't, I haven't seen anyone respond to this item. All right. Seeing none. This project, due to the cancellation of the F and A meeting, did not get to a committee meeting is my understanding. And so in, in kind of keeping with where I've been, when we do get the opportunity to go in front of a committee, Mr. Garcia, did you want to make the motion to get it on the table, or would you like to defer that?
No, I'll do it. I'll do it. I'd like to make a motion to approve A B twenty-one oh seven eight, authorizing the mayor to sign a purchase order with A B S slash Key Code Media for the council chambers A V upgrade project in the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Godhelp. Thank you very much. Mr. Garcia, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I just feel like this is, this is the next step. I, I think one of the things that I really makes me support this is there's plenty of times where people can't make it in to come to the meetings, but there's also times where the staff or a council member is unavailable or has, you know, a family thing where they need to be at home, and this allows them to still participate in the meeting without having to come to the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Godhelp.
Yeah, I mean, it's, this seems to be one of those things where we kind of don't have a choice. It's mandated by the state for us to move forward in a, to get back to in-person situations. And I agree, it could be used for those one-off times that you might, you might have a council member who not. But I would venture to guess that we probably need to see how that works and how disruptive, because that's one of the things we talked about at the board meeting was, would it be disruptive? We've tried to do this in the past, and having a council member come in, it wasn't as simple. So we'll see how this solution works.
Right. And please don't forget that this also will be addressing some of the sound quality issues within council chambers as well.
We actually truly have, I think, in this regard, gotten the, a benefit of timing in that we're, we're expecting to be able to address quite a few issues around this that we've discovered through the time we've been here in City Hall and be able to take care of them with the funding that was intended to be able to address citizen needs exactly for this type of a thing. And so it is seeming like a perfect timing sort of an issue for us. Other council comments, questions? Seeing none. The motion before you is to approve A B twenty-one dash zero seven eight, authorizing the mayor to sign a purchase order with A B S slash Key Code Media for the council chambers A V upgrade project in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you very much. And with that, that is the last agenda bill item on tonight's agenda. We will move to mayor, council, and administrator concerns and initiatives. I'll at this point also point out to council, we do have an executive session following this, and so we'll be moving into that shortly after. And with that, let us start with Ms. Cullen.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Godhelp.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Ooh, Mr. Alonback.
Well, now for something completely different. No, nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, let's see, when that reaches four, is that a majority and we just stop? No. Mr. Rosen?
I want to stop this train from moving along, so nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Elwood.
Just apologizing for being a few minutes late. I don't understand why Zoom doesn't work with my machine, and I realize it's because Zoom doesn't seem to favor Firefox browser. So it took me a few extra minutes to get in. So lesson on me. And then I love the new A V idea because when I look at you, Your Honor, you look like in a, you're in a prison jumpsuit. And, and, and maybe, you know, when you're, when you're in your cell, we can have you attend our meetings with this new technology. So, so that's really good. So I'm looking forward to that new advancement.
I appreciate that. It does feel like that at times. Mr. Garcia.
Well, 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 I actually have a couple of things to say. First, I know that they're often unpopular, but we do seem to have a lot of construction going on right now. Some, there's some couple of points of flaggers. Please slow down, follow their directions, be patient, and get through that safely. Second, you know, it's been, it's been a while since we've got some rain. We've had some great days. One of the things that we still have going on, though, is, is a big snowpack. Please, please, please execute proper river safety. The rivers, I stood at the other day, not a small person, and it literally almost just pushed me over and I was only thigh deep. So it's still moving fast. I know people want to get in the water, but just be safe, know where you're at, make sure your kids are safe. Let's, let's have a summer without any more accidents.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, from the administration.
Just a bit of an announcement. My son came down with COVID, so I'm quarantining myself to keep all of you and the other people at City Hall safe. So you don't see me there. I'm working real hard on the home computer, the I'm working real hard on the home computer, the telephone and still keeping contact and keeping projects moving, but trying to do it the safe way. So just a word to the wife.
Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate your your candor. And for me, a couple of very quick items. And so first part, you've been here in City Hall is now open to the public Monday through Thursday from eight thirty A M. to noon and one to four thirty and on Fridays from eight thirty to noon. Entry to City Hall is only permitted at the Cedar Falls Way entrance at this time. And public health guidelines are in place for those that visit. Please be mindful of those if you come to City Hall. As Mr. Garcia pointed out, there is a lot of construction going on. One of those is construction of a new privately funded roundabout at the intersection of North Bend Way and four thirty sixth Avenue, scheduled to begin this week. The contractor crews working for Cedar River Partners will be building the roundabout to mitigate future traffic traffic impacts at this critical intersection. Construction of the roundabout will impact traffic on four thirty sixth Avenue and Southeast Tanner Road. For more information about road closures in general, traffic mitigation and detours, please visit the news section of the city website. Also a share at this point, next Tuesday, July twenty seventh, the city will hold a virtual town hall meeting to discuss creation of the Metal Brook Utility Local Improvement District. Residents living in this area are strongly encouraged to attend the online Zoom meeting that starts at seven P M. Login information for the meeting is available by visiting the news section or the community calendar of the city website. And then finally, council, just as a reminder, the July twenty seventh council work study has been canceled. And with that, I'll keep the rest of the I notions for further meetings in another time. And we will be moving into executive discussion to discuss property acquisition pursuant to R C W forty two dot thirty dot one ten one B and potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty two dot thirty dot one ten one I. We do expect to be approximately sixty minutes. And with that, Don, if you would help the public and non-executive staff to exit, please do keep the city attorney. Thank you for that. And we are back from executive session. No action is being taken at this time, council. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Loudback, second by Mr. Elwood. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time.
Long night, everybody. Good update. Thank you, guys.